I'd now like to introduce the candidates running for the Kennewick City Council. Running for Council Position 5, Ward 1 are Gloria Tyler Baker and Bob Olson. Running for Position 6, Ward 2 are Diane Crawford and Paul Parish. And running for Council Position 7, Ward 3 are Lauren Nichols and Steve Young. We will begin with the opening statements with Position 5, Ward 1, and according to the closest birthday to mine, Mr. Olson, you're going to be first.[86.72][86.72](Laughter)
That isn't what you said earlier.
No, her birthday is also for Dr. Baker.
That's all right. I'd just like to thank the League for having us here again this year, and this is, I think this is my seventh anniversary. I enjoy the position. I've been around for a long time. I came to the area in 1949, graduated from high school, went on a couple of years of college, in the service. I got married, went into business. I left the business in 2009. I forgot about, I re-upped in 1955, and she's still with me. I like the job. I've been around quite a while. I'm just finishing up my sixth term, so I am the incumbent, and I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Baker?
I've been a resident in the Tri-Cities since about 1976. I moved here from Seattle right out of, when I graduated from high school, moved here in '76, and the first boom we got to experience here. So I've been through several of the ups and downs of our economy. I'm a local business owner. I'm an auto dealership owner. I'm a member of the Independent Auto Dealers Association, the National Auto Dealers Association, Better Business Bureau, and also the member of the Tri-City Chamber of Commerce. I have three adult sons, 29, 30, and 31, only about three months of the year that actually falls like that. But they also work in my business with me. I'm running because I want to try to help make sense sometimes of the things. I think it takes a good team. I think it takes a lot of different types of personalities and different experiences that can be an asset to our city government.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move to Position 6, Ward 2, and Mr. Parish, would you please go first?
Good evening, Paul Parish. I'm a City Councilman, Ward 2, Position 6. I was born in Bend, Washington, in Adams County. I've lived in the Tri-Cities since 1966. Moved to Kennewick in '78. Married my wife Linda, four children. Veteran, served in 82nd Airborne Division, '54 to '57. Worked in construction for 40 years and retired from Lamson Corporation in 2004. I own my own business, which is Paul Parish Limited. We're a retail mobility company that sells products for the physically challenged. We also are national crane certifiers. And 2009 Kennewick Man of the Year. Enjoy serving on council and would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Crawford?
Good evening. Thank you to everybody that's here this evening and participating. I've been a resident of Kennewick for 20 years. I have two grown children, five grandchildren, and my husband is a native Tri-Cityan. I have no political experience, and this is my first try at seeking public office. I'm from the school of hard knocks and life experiences. I have a near-genius IQ, have a background in banking and finance, dental, sales, and have owned several businesses, and co-managed a multimillion-dollar retail company in Tri-Cities. At present, I am an ordained minister and bookkeeper for my husband's upholstery business. I'm compassionate, have strong ethics, and a champion for the underdog, which I consider to be the average citizen, the only special interest group I care to align myself with. My main focus would be job creation and to continue to assure that Kennewick is a safe place to grow up, marry, raise kids, and retire. I believe in term limits. Mr. Parish has served his community well. However, after four consecutive terms and 16 years on the job, it's time to vote in another well-intentioned citizen who has a strong desire to serve her community. I am a blank slate, ready to learn, love change, and embrace challenges. I have no beef with my opponent or the city council. However, I have found it to be quite frustrating that those who have interviewed me can't simply understand that more than the incumbents have a desire to serve. It is because we don't like change, or because of "don't fix it" attitude, because change is when growth occurs, and growth is the essential word. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we will go to opening statements for Position 7, Ward 3, and we'll begin with Steve Young.
Well, I want to thank the chambers. I want to thank the League of Women Voters, Tri-City Herald, Charter, many other partners came together to put this on. My wife of 42 years, and I have lived here since 1987. It was our second time to live here. We raised three children, now have six grandchildren, all living in the area. And we love the city. I began serving this city in 1990 in different boards and commissions, also served on the Public Facilities District and was the construction manager for the Convention Center. In 2009, there was a vacancy available on the city council, and I was encouraged to apply. And I was chosen by the city council to serve, to fill the seat vacated by Commissioner Beaver. At the end of that year, I had to run for office and successfully won my position. Now I'm running again. It feels like I've run every year since I've been on the council.[463.81][463.81](Laughter) But I'm finding that the service to the community is the greatest thing I've ever done. I'm having fun with it. I made a commitment when I ran the last time that I would work hard to serve you, the citizens. I recently told an individual that I have 88,000 bosses. The one I'm most afraid of, of course, is my wife.[484.31][484.31](Laughter) So vote for me, and here we go.
Thank you. And now we'll hear from your opponent, Lauren Nichols.
First, I would like to thank everyone involved in making this forum possible. My name is Lauren Nichols. I have been a resident of Kennewick for the past 13 years. I hold a degree in math education and for a while taught math at a regional job corps center. I'm a U.S. Navy veteran and made five deployments out to sea. A top-secret clearance was entrusted to me. Most of my job history since moving to the Tri-Cities in 1987 involved working in the field of retail inventory, which I found both rewarding and challenging. I feel compelled to run for this office so as to give added weight and proper representation to some issues to which I am sensitive and about which I feel strongly, two of which are the presence of illegal aliens in our community and the continuing erosion of value for the English language here. I would also like to see measures taken that assist in curtailing the number of new persons taking up the harmful and highly addictive habit of smoking. And I believe we can realize improvements in our public transit system so that bus riders are not stranded for a half hour awaiting connections at both the Dayton and Huntington Transit Centers during non-peak hours. I feel that the city needs to better pace and prioritize its spending. I'm seeing too many high-dollar projects going on at one time. I would like to see spending more within our means so that future indebtedness for city taxpayers is minimized. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to the question and answer portion. We're going to start with Position 5. And Ms. Baker, I'm going to ask you to go first in answering this question. In your opinion, can we give incentives for solar to our builders and developers with partnership with Benton PUD?
Can we?
Can the city do something to give incentives to solar energy, to the builders and developers?
Well, I don't know for sure if that's really, I know the federal government has a lot of tax energy credits. I'm not sure if it's something that city really should be that involved in as far as the, as far as credits go on a city level, I haven't done enough research on that, but it seems to me that the federal government is already doing that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Olson? Same question. It's by the audience.
That's a tough question, and I think that's out of our responsibility, the city's responsibility to give credit for going green. I can-
Well, let's say this. What could the council do to encourage people? Anything? Either of you?
Well, we can encourage people to go green, but that'd have to be done through the builders, and I think, I don't know how much help we could give somebody with the older homes, whether, and we've just seen where we had a multimillion-dollar corporation, a billion-dollar corporation went souths because they couldn't make anything because of the competition from China. So, boy, I don't know.
Okay.
That's out of, clear out of my range.[733.73][733.73](Laughter)
Do you have anything else?
I think there's probably other ways to promote, to help businesses for the, for business owners that would benefit the city in tax revenue to give them credits for other things that would increase their, maybe their sales tax fund and such, and that actually does come into our coffers. So there may be some other credits that might be available for, you know, re-establishing or re-appropriating buildings and such like that that actually help the city and the coffers of the city.
Okay, okay. Anything else, Mr. Olson? I know I goofed up the timing, but-
No.
-it'd be both equal.[781.12][781.12](Laughter) I'd like to answer that. Okay, this next question is for, what do we call them? Position 6. And my question is, if there was some extra money to be spent in downtown development, what do you think would give the best return on an investment there? And we'll start with you, Ms. Crawford.
Oh, best return on investment?
Downtown.
Maybe to house the carousel somewhere.[821.51][821.51](Laughter) You know, I don't think that's a good return on investment right now, but you know, you're talking about extra money. You know, it's hard to answer that question because there is no extra money. And right now, we're looking at cutting a budget and things getting tighter and tighter, and so I think even discussing anything that's basically irrelevant to the situation right now is just that, irrelevant, so.
Okay, okay.
That's my answer.
Mr. Parish, same question?
Well, I think it would be Bridge to Bridge. We're partnered with the port. That's a project we've been working on for several years. Hopefully, it'll come to fruition someday. There's a lot of things that have to happen. We are the regulatory side by law, and the port is the development side, but by partnering, why, I think there could, would be some things we could do to move forward with the Bridge to Bridge project.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll go to Position 7, and Mr. Nichols, if you would go first. Most people would consider public safety the most important job a city performs. Considering that we are in a time of tight budgets, do you think fire and police services might be compromised? Why or why not?
I don't think there'll be, I don't personally think they'll be compromised. I agree, public safety is a major priority in our city, and we will find ways to make sure that we can still fund what the police and our fire departments are doing in that area. Thank you.
Mr. Young?
Well, yeah, our first obligation is to the safety and the security of the citizens of the city. That's our first obligation above everything else. And we cannot let anything interfere with providing that safety and security. The type of designs that we have in the city, the way our city is structured, all of that applies to the safety and security of the city, even our lighting for the streetlights. But let me say this. One of the challenges the city council faces each and every meeting is how do we make ends meet? How do we, how do we adjust our budget to make sure that we do have sufficient fire and sufficient police? When I came on the council in 2009, we were short seven police officers. Today, we're only short two. We did all of that without increasing the budget to the citizens. In fact, this last budget, we dropped. It's the first time I can remember that the budget has been dropped to the city of Kennewick, and yet we were still able to hire more police officers. But it's going to continue to be a challenge. One of the ways we're going to face these challenges with police and fire is working out our partnerships among the other cities in this area. How are we going to deal with the costs that they're facing, just like we are?
Thank you. This next question, I'm going to ask all six of you to answer, and I'm going to begin with you, Mr. Parish. Kind of touches on what you had just said. How would you describe the relationship between the city and the port of Kennewick, especially in regards to Clover Island, the proposed revitalization of Columbia Drive, and the future development of Vista Field? Do you think there is a shared vision between the port and the city for these areas?
Yes, and I think our relationship is excellent. It had some bumps in it in the past, but with our city manager, Marie Mosley, I think that she's doing a fine job, and I think we've got an excellent relationship on everything that you just touched on. We've moved forward in a lot of areas. If we need to rezone Vista Field and also down in the Bridge to Bridge, we have done that. Like I alluded to earlier, we are regulatory and of course, there are developments, so sometimes our hands are tied on what we can and can't do. But no, we have a good relationship, and we're moving forward with everything.
Thank you. Ms. Crawford?
Well, like Paul said, there is a good relationship between the two. I think since Marie Mosley's been on board, obviously, she's done a wonderful job. She was just awarded her new pay increase, retroactive for what she's done for the city. So she's made big strides along with the council to be able to have a good working relationship with the port.
Thank you. Mr. Young?
Yeah, the relationship with the port of Kennewick is a good relationship. Two years ago, we were in a battle between the port and the city council regarding Vista Field. Citizens came out and said, "We want it. We want to keep it." The option we had as a city council was to jump on board with the port of Kennewick and find ways to make it successful. The Vista Entertainment District, now called the Three Rivers Entertainment District, which includes the Vista Field, is one of the three, one of the legs of a three-legged stool for the city of Kennewick. That includes the downtown area and Columbia Drive. So we're also on board with the port and have signed many agreements with them to further develop that area. We're different in a city position in that we can't invest in land to speculate how we're going to use that land in the future. It's against the law. But the port can. So what we're doing is working hand-in-hand with the port to ensure that we can develop that property along the river, both there and as well as Vista Field near the Entertainment District. The relationship with the port is excellent now. My wife, in fact, serves on a Vista Airfield Committee for a future event that's coming up, and it's a great, it's a great thing we've got going on with the port now, and we're proud of it.
Thank you. Mr. Nichols, same question?
I'm not personally aware of the exact relationship between the city and the port of Kennewick, but it's, but from what I'm hearing, it sounds as if it's good. And I know, I've heard that Vista Field mentioned here and also Bridge to Bridge, and personally, I'm not for advancing those at this time. I think those are projects that we can hold off on for quite a while until our economy becomes better. And we, I think we need to look at what are the necessary projects first and prioritize where we're going to go with things. So I'm putting, I hope there still continues to be a good relationship between the city and the port of Kennewick, but on those two particular areas, Vista Field and Bridge to Bridge project, I'm willing to hold off for a while on those.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Olson, do you have anything to add?
Two years ago, the port and the city, or I should say, Bob and the port were on different sides of this issue. I was first closing Vista Field. However, when the port made up their mind to keep it open, then we all got behind it. We're going to, we're going to go, we're going to go with them. We're going to help them every way that we can help them, and we will develop that area. In fact, tomorrow night, I think we have an item on the agenda which answers to that, that question. As far as the island and Columbia Drive, I own property on Columbia Drive. Do I agree with them? No, but you've got to go along with it because most of the people say that's the way we want to go, and that's the way this council operates. We all don't see a like, but when we see a like, I mean, when we vote, we usually come up with the same answer. So, yeah, we're in a good relationship with them.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Baker?
Being lost, I mean, we've already, I pretty much know what's going on.[1353.83][1353.83](Laughter) So as far as the Vista Field, my business is directly on Clearwater, and so I, it's actually butts up behind Vista Field. I think our Vista Field area has grown pretty nicely in the last, say, 15 to 20 years. I think they've done a great job out there. The Bridge to Bridge situation, as much research as I've really tried to do on that situation, there's not a lot published on it. But from what I am gathering, it seems to me that we are going to need to definitely be looking outside of our area to bring in good anchors in that area to actually be able to support what they're proposing, because I don't think without good anchors in that area to bring people in for little shops and things, I think you're setting them up for disaster without good anchors that bring the tourists in and so on and so forth. But other than that, I think it probably will be a good idea if we can put it all together.
Okay, thank you. The next question is for Positions 7. And Mr. Nichols, if you would please go first. We just talked about the relationship with the port. How would you describe Kennewick's working partnership with other government entities in our areas, such as the other cities, hospital district, school district, and the county? Is there an area where you would like to see more shared cooperation or planning or have them be in a partnership? Is there a partnership you think is working well?
Present, I think we're, I think we're working well with our two cities, Pasco and I like the Step To project that's in conjunction with the city of Richland, and I like how that's going to alleviate congestion of traffic on Leslie and Columbia Center Boulevard. And I'm for cities working together. And hospital district, county, I'm not as familiar with the relationship or interaction of our city with those two areas. But I feel it's good to be involved with those outside of our own city that are nearby, other cities, hospital districts, the counties, Franklin and Benton, and continuing, continue with a working relationship for what would be, what we can do together that would benefit both parties.
Thank you. Mr. Young?
Well, when I was appointed to mayor by the city council two years ago, my first act that I took on myself was to set up a monthly meeting with the three other mayors of the four cities that make up this area. And every month, those four mayors have met ever since then. And we talk about the issues and the challenges we're facing that cross the boundaries, that cross borders, costs of service, et cetera. In addition to that, we found that there are shared services we can have among the cities. In the city of Kennewick and the city of Richland, we found that, as an example, that procurement could be done by a single city, buying for two cities, and reducing our costs both in labor and by buying bulk merchandise. And it's working. We believe there's more of that yet to come, and we're looking at things like fleet maintenance, et cetera. But in addition to that, I meet with the, with the hospital district every quarter. I meet with senior staff. I also meet with the, with the board members. And we talk about the issues facing the city and what impacts it has on the hospital and vice versa. In addition to that, I, oh, I hate those paddles. In addition to that, I, I meet with the, with the, with one of the commissioners of the county, of Benton County, every month, just to talk about some of the issues that we're both facing in the near future. Quiet. Thank you.[1651.32][1651.32](Laughter)
Thank you. Okay, Position 6. Ms. Baker, if you would go first on this question?
I'm 7.
You're 7. Okay, wait a minute.
I'm 5.
Six, 5. You're right. This is question 6. Position 5.
Okay.
Is the infrastructure in Kennewick, in your opinion, in good shape for potential population and economic growth during the next 10 years?
I believe so. I think we've set up, it seems to me, as a resident in Kennewick, that we have set up our infrastructure relatively well, as far as I believe in our fire and police department. We are planning on building the other hospital. From the research I've done on that, we are, we've done well at building our, good entertainment facilities. I think that's good. I think those are all things that are going to help our community. They're doing a pretty good job on our roads most of the time. They do a lot of work on those. And then they are doing the Step To in Hildebrand. I believe that's, that's in the works. I think that's definitely going to help us. But overall, I don't think that we are busting at the seams, not in the position of what Pasco was doing. I think we've been building new schools. We've been upgrading our schools. Bob probably knows more about this than I do.[1750.41][1750.41](Laughter)
Okay, well, let's see.
Our infrastructure's in pretty good, pretty good position. We have 22,500 water accounts, and we have about 15,000 sewer accounts. Our sewer and water facility will handle about 30% more. We are building, in the process of building a new reservoir right now west of town, and there's another one on the books. So, and we're talking the infrastructure underground, well, we've got a mile- Boy, we've got miles and miles of pipe and stuff underground. And a lot of people don't realize that we've got 6,100 street lights, 3,500 fire hydrants. So when you're talking about infrastructure, we've got infrastructure, and we're in a good shape. And I think we're in a real good shape with our infrastructure.
Okay, thank you. This next question now is for Position Six. And Ms. Crawford, if you would go first. Gang activity, and especially gang violence, is a problem facing many cities in our area and in the country as a whole. How successful would you describe the efforts in Kennewick to deal with this continuing? How successful have they been?
I think they've been relatively successful with the gang sweeps and with the police department being really on top of it, being a main focus of theirs. But we can't get too lax, because if we get lax at all, that's when they start coming in, and that's when we start having problems. But overall, I think they've done a wonderful job. I just think that definitely we need more citizen participation, more neighborhood watches to help the police. We're the people living in the neighborhoods, we're the people that are seeing the activity go down, and we have to be the eyes and ears. They cannot be everywhere. So please take it to heart, please, if you see something, notify the police and let them go from there, they're the experts.
Thank you. Mr. Parrish?
I agree with Diane. I'd like to add that I think we have the best police chief in the United States in Ken Holmberg. He has, you know, done wonders with the department. We, as a council, built him a new station, and we overbuilt it, and we did that on purpose. So we have a lot of room at his facility, and we partnered with all the federal agencies, state agencies. We have ICE, FBI, you name it, we have them there, and we give them a free room. And by doing that, why, they partner with us on everything. We usually do gang sweeps, probably quarterly. And we've now expanded them up into the valley to try to help Yakamas, and they have quite a problem. It got away from. I don't think it will get away from us as long as we support our police department like we should, as long as Ken Holmberg's our chief of police. He's doing one excellent job, and he's on top of it. And we work at it very hard to make sure it doesn't get out of hand.
Thank you. Okay, this next question is for Mr. Olson and Ms. Baker. And Mr. Olson, if you would go first. Do you have any ideas on ways that the city of Kennewick could do more to build a sense of community for all of Kennewick's many older neighborhoods and newer developments and its more diverse population?
What we could do, wow, where did that question come from? No, I don't have any idea what we could do to, you know, our older neighborhoods, except that the houses that are going back for taxes and stuff, we have a program in place right now where we fix those houses up and sell them, resell them for limited income people. So that's about, that and the block grant, it's about the most we can do, or the most I see we're doing.
Okay. I think a lot of that would be more of a, not just city, but more of a citizen involvement, as far as, there's a lot of other cities and other states and other towns that revitalize a lot of their older areas. And I think that's going to have to do with a lot of citizen participation as far as working on that. A lot of these areas are low-income. So I don't know for sure if, you know, there's possibility that there may be tax advantages, property tax advantages. I understand that's run by the county. But on people in areas that need to be, you know, they're older neighborhoods, houses that were built in the '30s, '40s, and even earlier. A lot of those neighborhoods have tended to pretty much go to our lower-income families and then not be kept up. Except for some of your, there are little islands of those, and then your retired folks that have been living in some of those neighborhoods for 40 years. Their house looks beautiful, and the rest of the block looks, you know, awful. But I think it's going to be a lot of citizen involvement, too, that's going to have to help support those kind of situations.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Parrish, if you'd go first on this next question. In the area of economic development, what assets does Kennewick have, and what businesses do you think would be a good fit for Kennewick?
Well, one we're really working hard at right now is getting a spade in the ground at South Ridge to get a new hospital built. And it looks like that's going to happen in the near future. And when it does, economic development will go wild in that area. There's several peoples out there now waiting for this to happen. And one thing we have done to help economic development and help the hospital is local revitalization financing. And the tune of, we got in the lottery that the state ran, and we got in there in fifth place, which we were eligible for. And if we could prove that we had enough new businesses that were bringing in tax revenue, they give us back $500,000 a year of U.P. people's tax money, which is paying for the whole South Ridge area complex, which is huge, it's really huge. We work very hard at economic development. We realized probably about 10 years ago that if you don't grow, you die. We're very dependent on sales tax in the city of Kennewick. And our projection usually comes in 2% or 3% over. And that's what makes this city run, is the revenue we get in sales tax. So economic development is a very important thing to the city of Kennewick.
Thanks, Crawford.
Economic development, obviously, is number-one priority for everyone, every city, every state in the union. We have to have a strong economic base just so that we can have the sales tax revenue come in, which is where the budget's falling short anymore. So at this point, almost any type of business coming into the area would be a good fit for Kennewick. Few undesirables that we can think of that we don't want in there. But, you know, the South Ridge end of town is still a little barren. The people that live on this side of, that side of the city don't have a lot of entertainment. We all have to go to the other side of the city to do things. So more entertainment venues in the area, that would draw people in from Oregon also. So it would may, just not just, you know, the citizens of the city that would be frequenting those areas. More hotels, just so that we have places for people to stay when they're coming to visit the South Ridge complex, and hope to have more sports facilities to help us grow.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Young, if you'll go first, please, on this question. Are there any particular state laws that impact cities that you would like to see changed, and why?
There are so many unfunded mandates that the state is putting on the cities. But let me tell you about the one that's causing us the biggest problem, and that's the Growth Management Act. In the United States, 50 states, for those who didn't take geography, five states now have a Growth Management Act, five states. Growth Management Act is an anti-economic development, anti-growth act. It's primarily designed around those cities where you have a number of small cities that bump up against each other, and it protects one city with more money from overtaking another city. And on the west side, it has served its purpose. The east side of the state is consistently being punished by that Growth Management Act. It limits our ability to expand our city. Let me give you an example of what we're facing in the city of Kennewick now. It's all about the economy, it's all about jobs. We can talk about retail space, we can talk about industrial space, but it's about jobs. In the city of Kennewick, only 4% of our land is set aside for industrial, 4%. That's not very many jobs. We desperately need to create an area within the city that allows for industrial development while not affecting our lifestyle, the lifestyle we've come to know and love. No. So what we want to do is expand south of I-82 into what we call the flatlands. We need somewhere between 750 and 900 acres to set us down. Stop me afterwards, I'll give you the rest of it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Nichols?
Well, this is a very specific question, and there are a lot of state laws. And I admit I don't know all of them, and how they impact the cities. So I really can't, at this point, answer that. But when I'm on council, as things come up and state laws come into play that are referenced by staff, then I will do homework on whatever the particular state law is, and I'll just have to learn through experience.
Okay, thank you. This is a question from the audience. I'm going to throw it open, I guess you could raise your hand if you know the answer. What is the gambling tax in Kennewick? Do we know that?
How much is it?
It's 10%, and we could charge 20, but we've always chosen to charge 10 because we have a lot of problem with gambling operations paying their taxes. So we've kept it a little lower, in hope that they will. We just went through a couple of closures, and it used to be a long-drawn-out mess to try to recover your tax money.
Okay, and the rest of this question, I'll ask you, since you started with that. How did we let a casino get so far in debt? Are you aware of that situation?
Yes, somewhat. Pardon me?
Good luck.
Good luck. Probably because of the way the state laws are, and what we can and can't do, and how we collect taxes. After, a lot of people don't think about it, but we are very controlled by the state as far as what we can and can't do. Earlier, you were talking about energy and what could we give back? Well, we can't, because that's gifting, and we can't gift public funds. So we are a coded city, which means we have to follow the codes of the state of Washington. And when they change a law, we have to mirror the law, either that or make it more stringent. But we're very tightly controlled on what we can and can't do. As a city council, we can control the budget and how it's spent, hiring for the city manager, and that's about as good as it gets anymore. They've taken us pretty much out of the land use, and we probably needed to be out of some of it because it takes the politics out of it.
Okay. Do you want to add something?
Can I just add just a little bit to that? One of the things that you have to understand about the casino business is it's very easy for a casino to not have any assets. They have very few assets in a casino. We have to be very careful when we go and try to collect taxes on a casino, because in a moment's notice, they can drop everything, and we lose the whole thing. So we have to try to work with casinos to find ways to get them to pay their taxes when they are delinquent. And that's why it takes so long sometimes to settle the dispute, is you're trying to work out a payment plan where they will pay the taxes. If eventually they don't, certainly they close down, we take action. The problem is, they don't have any assets. We lose that way, too. It's better for us if we can collect some or all of those taxes.
Yeah, they're usually an LLC, and they don't own the building, they rent it. And when you really get to the bottom of the paperwork, they don't much own anything, except maybe the furniture.
Okay, and Mr. Olson, do you have something to add?
This is, you know, in any other business, if you get a loan, or you owe a bill, or you tried to get some new equipment, you've got to sign personally for that. And I think that is something that we should do with the casinos. You don't get in on an LLC. You get on the LLC, but you should have to sign something personally. If you go in the hole, you owe 400 grand, you pay for it. True, we've slid on this, again, just what they said, because of our laws and the way they're set up. We have changed this to a 30-day pay period, so they can't get in as far, as deep as they did before. But I would still like to see them personally responsible for their taxes.
Okay, one more comment?
Another thing is, all the gambling tax can only be used to support the police department, which is also regulating it.
Okay. Yeah, I was going to get there, those of you who...
I agree with Bob, that's, I think that's, myself, I'm an LLC. But in my business, we have to borrow a lot of money. And my husband and I are on the line for everything, personally guaranteeing it all. And I think that's a real good idea, because it definitely would stop people from being able to just set up corporations. And then if it just doesn't work out for them, just, you know, pull the plug on it, and then everybody else is holding it, if it doesn't work.
Just that my husband and I are small business owners also, and we are held personally responsible.
Mr. Nichols?
I'm personally not in favor of gambling in the first place. For some, it can be a very addictive habit, and they can lose a lot of money, and I've seen that happen before.
Okay. I'm going to give one last question to the three challengers here. And then if the other three want to throw something in, feel free. But let's go with one-minute answers. And this is the last question from the audience. How can we, I'm assuming as a city, take leadership of our citizens' health? I guess, for example, this says obesity. Also, Mr. Nichols, you mentioned about smoking, or not smoking. Ms. Crawford, do you have any ideas on that?
Well, you know, we already have laws in effect regarding smoking at business places, not being able to smoke, you know, within so many feet of the front door of a business. People were threatened to be, and are being kicked out of some housing units here because they have no smoking. You know, we are already so involved in this in the government that we really cannot be that involved with people. You know, people have, still have to have a choice. We live in America. So, you know, if you want to smoke, that is your business. It's not my right to tell you what you can and cannot do. I think it's a terrible habit, and I think it's unhealthy, but that's just my opinion. As far as obesity goes, education, 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 education in the schools regarding healthy food choices.
Okay, Mr. Nichols?
I agree with the education about obesity in schools. And as far as smoking, I would like to see the city, perhaps in conjunction with cooperation with Pasco and Richland also, petition the state or propose to the state a new law on the age of smoking. Every day, new people, every day, new people turn 18 and then become eligible to smoke. And personally, I would like to see a final cutoff date. And after that, no new persons can legally smoke. It doesn't, that won't affect people that are already smoking. But I really don't want our youth to see, to go through what my brother did. Lung cancer, passed away in March, had a lung removed, went through chemo and radiation and all the side effects that go along with that.
Okay. Do you have anything to add, Ms. Baker?
Yes, I do. I think as far as our state and our cities, I think we're regulating, as far as the smoking issue, considerably as much as I think any government should probably get involved in. I do believe as far as the education would be definitely, more education with these kids that are young, young, of course. And I know that they're already doing that. And the alcohol... And I, the alcohol situation is, there's a fine line there. The city and the government can only have so much control over our lives. But at the same token, our sons and daughters are able to fight for our country at the age of 18. But, you know, if you're gonna lengthen this to 21, then maybe our kids shouldn't be going into service at 18 either. I mean, there's a fine line there as far as our city and our federal and our state control over our lives. Either that, or we make everybody just join a health club. We'll pay for it. Hey, I need one, too. We all members, but we don't really go, no.
Danny, if you have anything. Mr. Olson, anything to add?
They handled it real well. Especially the obese part.
Mr. Hen?
I just wanted to add that Bob is a member of a health club.
Okay. I think now we will move on to closing statements. And hopefully, I have the right order. We will begin with position five, Ward one. And Ms. Baker, if you would please go first.
This is the first time I've ever run for any political position. I feel very strongly about it. Whatever I do, I'm very passionate about what I do. I work very hard. I'm a very good solver, problem solver, budgeter. You have to be that way when you're in business. And as far as the city goes, we need to run it like a business. Some of the estimates that I've researched on a lot of things, I believe that, I'm not sure if a lot of contractors just see dollar signs in their eyes when they see city or any kind of state government money. I think sometimes we might be getting taken advantage of in that way. I think sometimes we need to do a little bit more research. It works the same way in our businesses. You know, one thing is, in the primary, too, as far as community service, I think we need to get our citizens involved a little bit more. We have a lot of great programs. And I know this is televised this time. I was the founder of the Codes for Kids program back in 1987. Proud of that. And it's turned into a great program. And it's been great for a lot of, you know, people that can't afford codes. And they give away thousands of them. But I would like to serve you. I like Bob. He's a good guy, too. I don't have anything against this one. I just, I'd like to possibly have a position. And vote for me if you can.
Thank you. Mr. Olson?
I enjoy the job. I enjoy the consulate we have now. We have a good bunch of people. Get along well. And I think we're doing an excellent job. I'd like to, I'd hoped I can clear up a couple of misconceptions. When we talk about shortage of money in the city of Kennewick, and everybody says, "Well, what about the sales tax you get?" Well, on a hundred-dollar sales, there's $8.30 in taxes, and the city gets 80 cents. Out of the dollar of your property tax, the city gets 20 cents. So, that'll just give you an idea. So, when you're paying that property tax, you know, it doesn't all come to the city. In the case of the hundred-dollar sale at $8.35, $6.50 that goes to the state. So, I'd appreciate your vote. And that's what the RE stands for, re-elect. That wasn't me, that was a friend of mine. And I'd like to thank the league and everybody involved here tonight. Again, I don't know where those questions came from. But, boy, as far as running the city, that's, they're tough. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll go to position six, Ward two. And Mr. Parrish, if you would please go first.
I'd like to thank the league and the cosponsors for hosting this forum. And I'd like to thank you, the voters, for electing me to council for the past four terms. I appreciate being able to serve you, and I'd like to continue working for you. I'm committed to represent the interests of all the people in Kennewick, and I hope I can count on your support in the upcoming election. Another thing that wasn't mentioned, we have an operating budget of $90 million. Our overall budget is $230 million. We have 347 employees. Population is right at 75,000. We have 600 miles of streets, 1,200 lane miles, 106 police officers, 90 commissioned, and 78 firefighters in uniform. So, it's a great responsibility, and I really enjoy doing this. And I appreciate your vote, and thank you for being here.
Thank you. Ms. Crawford?
Thank you, everyone, this evening. In conclusion, during this election campaign process and the interviews that have come from it, it's become very apparent to me that many still believe in the good old boys' club. And this is evidenced by the fact that women only make up 14% of the city council, only 17% of the Herald's editorial board, 16% of the Board of Directors for the Home Builders Association, just to name three. We are in the 21st century where women have the right to drive and vote without fearing tin lashes. Women own million-dollar companies, head more single-parent households than men, can purchase homes on their own and are allowed to enter the political arena, become senators, governors, and someday, a woman will be president. Now is the time for more equal representation of the people served at the local level. In these same interviews, my intentions have been questioned as if no one, if one is not eligible to be a candidate elected unless you have an agenda other than to simply be the voice of people and to be a positive example. I actually have been talked down to due to the fact that I am not as informed on issues as the same as the person that has been in the job for 16 years. Unfortunately, there is no school of council person. And most knowledge gleaned will be from John, the job training. I would appreciate your vote and ask that you seriously consider voting for equality, growth, and change when needed. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's only one man in the legal and voters.
Oh, is that... Well, yeah, but women is the operative word. That's less percentage, isn't it?
No, men can be members.
Does that would be enlightened?
There you go.
Okay. And now, closing statements for position seven, Ward three. Mr. Young?
Well, what I'd really like to say to you now is I'd like to answer the three questions I didn't get to finish. But I don't have time for that. I'm not running for office to be a lifetime member of the city council. I'm running for office because I had a 10-point plan when I was appointed. And I would like to finish the action items we have. I love serving the city of Kennewick. I love planning for the future of my children, my grandchildren, and my great-grandchildren. I'm not the smartest guy around, but I do enjoy what I'm doing. I will tell you, you can see tonight from the questions that have been asked and the way we've answered the questions, being on the city council is very, very complex. The issues that come before us are not always the same. In fact, very few that come before us are the same as another one that came earlier. And I'll tell you, it takes a lot of research and a lot of study. You cannot be a single-issue candidate and serve on the city council. Why? Because I'm accountable every day as a city councilman. If I ran for Congress and I'm sitting on the East Coast, I don't see you every day. If I run for legislation, state legislation, and I sit in Olympia, I don't have to see you every day. But on city council, I'm accountable every day. And trust me, I am. And that's why I wanna continue to serve. I wanna continue to see this community grow. I wanna see it finished. And I wanna see the future laid out for our families and our future families. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Nichols?
When we pledge allegiance to the flag, there are three key words that we say which describe our country: united, one, and indivisible. While freedom is great, there are some things on which we need to be united. First, we need to all be of one citizenry, legal. I value Kennewick. I don't want anyone here who isn't legally supposed to be here. We need to aggressively challenge the weak federal law regarding this issue. Entry into an occupation of our city by illegal aliens constitutes rape of Kennewick. This is not merely a misdemeanor. This is an offense warranting the highest penalty. To those that feel this is too extreme, I can say that I'm open to suggestion as long as it yields the same net result, the leaving of all illegal aliens from our city and measures installed that keep them out. I also value social unity. The English language has provided and promoted that in this country for as long as I can remember. Our public school system teaches English to all students as a basic subject. Therefore, the business world and other public entities should be operating in conjunction with that by showing full honor and support for English again. I believe to facilitate that, we need to mandate that all communications direct to the public in general within Kennewick be in English. If you share my values and concerns, I would greatly appreciate your vote and greatly appreciate the opportunity to represent you. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank all six of these candidates for participating in tonight's forum. A quick review for council position five, Ward one, are Gloria Tyler Baker and Bob Olson. Position six, Ward two, are Diane Crawford and Paul Parrish. And for council position seven, Ward three, are Lauren Nichols and Steve Young. I called the Benton County Auditor's Office this morning to get the correct information. They will be mailing out the ballots on October 19. And again, I'd like to remind you that tonight's forum was taped by Charter Communications and will be broadcast on Charter Channel 3 and on YouTube beginning sometime next week and up until the general election on November 8. Thank you all for attending tonight.